Welcome to the Norton School Committee meeting of May 28th. This meeting is being recorded. So the first thing on the agenda is to vote to approve minutes from April 9. Do we have a motion?
I have one very minor correction. Oh, sorry, you know, it's not on the line. I think it's on a different date, so.
So we need a motion to approve the 9?
So move.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, Kathleen Stern, Carolyn Gallagher?
Aye.
Sheri Cohen? Aye. Dinesh Advas?
Aye.
And Dan Sheedy?
Aye.
All right, and then the next one is the vote to approve April 23 minutes.
Okay, on that one, I have a small correction. In the update relative to the COVID-19 national emergency on the first page, the 1, 2, 3, 3rd, paragraph 3rd line, discussing the budget, it looks like there will be a 10% deduction. I think that should be reduction, not deduction.
I also have a minor correction on that one. On page 3, on the roll call vote, we have four listed as yes, myself listed as no, but the motion was a 5-0. So I guess we need to clarify. I don't recall voting no on that one, but.
Which one are we looking at, Tim?
Discussion on director position process and vote, like a roll call vote.
I'm pretty sure that you voted in the positive.
Yeah, and the last time I voted negative, I believe, was the community service agreement.
Right, exactly, yes.
Which was correct from the motion before.
Right, so Dan Sheedy said yes, not no, and the motion was 5-0.
So we need a motion to approve the amended minutes for April 23?
So move and move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, Kathleen Stern, Carolyn?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Dinesh?
Aye.
And Dan?
Aye.
And the last one is May 7. Motion to approve?
So move.
Any discussion on that one? Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, Kathleen Stern, Carolyn?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Dinesh?
Aye.
And Dan?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, the warrants.
I have reviewed and approved the following warrants. May 7, 2020, $89,065.59. May 14, 2020, $62,691.88. And May 21, 2020, $60,237.24. I wish to add them into public record.
And on to the student representatives.
Just like you, there isn't much, except we're technically graduating soon, which is nice.
I think we both submitted probably our last assignment today, right? I know I got one right under the wire. The seniors are going to go to the high school tomorrow to pick up our cap and gowns, which is exciting. We get to keep them this year. And from where I've heard, everyone is very excited about plans that have been made and told us, so.
Thank you, very excited, looking forward to it, keeping our fingers crossed that it all, you know, happens.
All right, does anybody have any? First of all, congratulations to both of you, and you've done an awesome job. We couldn't ask for anybody better. I mean, you guys gave us so much information when we could get it and when things were going on. So we really appreciate that. I think, I mean, as far as I can remember, you're the first two to actually do that, from saloonies right up to the high schools. So we really appreciate that.
Thanks.
Ask a quick question on that note. Do we have people in place for, to follow these guys?
There's a process for that that takes place, and we actually just discussed it today. We had some discussions with the administration about either replacing it with two incoming seniors or actually doing an incoming junior and an incoming senior. But that way, there's some continuity, which is the way it's been done. But we had to leave it to the administration and the student body to make that decision.
Is this their last meeting tonight?
No, we'll have, we're meeting next Thursday as well. And we'll probably be meeting all the way up to graduation, ending your approval tonight, so. Well, we'll see. We'll have conversations with Coop and Carolyn. But at least one more meeting formally, and then maybe a transition meeting. And we'll go from there. That way, they can have their Thursday night exciting nights to themselves as we open up the economy.
As long as we don't have to say goodbye to them tonight, then that's good.
Not yet. We're gonna at least call for one more meeting.
All right, does anybody have anything else to add? Okay, moving on, discussion and vote on graduation for class of 2020.
Yeah, on the recommendation of, I think I can say it this way, not only the high school administration, but I believe the student leaders of Norton High School, a desire to really, really want to have some type of an in-face graduation, even if it has rules. So their patience, as I said earlier at a national meeting that I was on with superintendents, you know, what I've learned about the COVID-19 in my students is the patience of my students, especially the senior class, just holding on and holding on for that one thing that could spring closure. So tonight, pending no other changes that would be required from above me or you, the school committee, we're recommending that we have a live graduation on Saturday, July 25 at 10:00 a.m. on the grounds of Norton High School with immediate family guests. There will be a pre-registration requirement, social distancing, masks, you know, all of that stuff as part of the reopening of the Commonwealth. We are being allowed to do so. We cannot have tents and all of that. So we have a rain date of Sunday, July 26. And as I said to my team the other day, or to the parents the other day even, and students that were on, darn it, if it rains on the 25th, I'm not gonna be very happy. I probably have some other thoughts about that that I can't do in a public meeting, because that would just be even more stress. But I'm really happy, I'm really proud. And so on the recommendation of the high school administration and the student body, I think, overloved only. And I know the leaders who have been really patient, wanting, wanting, wanting this. I think it's gonna be original, I think it's gonna be different. It might be even a little longer, because I think we're gonna have some planned things that we wanted to do to really celebrate the class of 2020.
And we know for sure that it wouldn't be possible at Comcast, because I know they've canceled all their concerts.
Yeah, right now, their venue is not yet open. And then their, the issue there is that that is considered an enclosure. So the best they can do would be their parking lot. To be quite honest, I don't need a parking lot. I would rather, I don't know if it's ever been held at Norton High School football field in the past, but we, our plans are to get a stage and seating, and then kind of use the track and around the track and the stands as family gathering areas for immediate family. There will be police involved, fire department involved, the health board, board of health will be involved. Very specific detailed requirement that we have to do. So we'll be moving on this in the very near future. We'll also be asking student leaders and the advisors to actually create, help to create what the day celebration will look like.
So can I ask? So the recommendations from the state are, it's a pretty long list. Is that posted somewhere on our website?
Not yet, but that's gonna be part of our release through the high school administration, the announcement of the date, and also all the different requirements. And then what we're gonna do is release it to the families and say, for example, you know, there's requirements around children under the age of two and older citizens or older family members. They're really looking at your immediate, who lives in your home. But we're also gonna be looking at things like live streaming it versus outside of the town. So like Wheaton did with people all over the country. We'd be able to livestream it. In this particular case, we'd be essentially livestreaming an actual event that's happening, not just, you know, pictures of people and stuff. But those are all things that we have to figure out with the Norton media and all the powers that be.
So just, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, I think it's helpful if those sort of requirements are public and just so families are aware of the expectations.
Yeah. Yeah, it's very specific. It's, and our board of health, who's been the biggest supporter of being patient about these things, to be quite honest, we've already talked to them a few times. He was actually on the call with the parents the other day and students. So we'll release those. There's gonna be a lot of second guessing things, but the fact is, we're an institution. And as an institution, we have a requirement to pull this off in a way that requires certain mandates. And of course, Wade's office will be significantly involved, manpower for that and all that. But, you know, we, we think this is the best situation for all of us. And I think that these students will give it up to Coop and to Carolyn to add positives or negatives if they so choose.
I can only think of positives. I was in one of the meetings where we went over like the nitty gritty, discussed with the administration what the options were. And this was by far the best one and the one that we all rallied behind and were so grateful that it was the one that is being recommended to you. Because it's so much more than just getting a piece of paper. And this, like, getting the moment where we're gonna walk across the stage is, it's gonna be something to remember, even if it's different, it'll be great.
Yeah, I completely agree. It's just, I'm glad that we're able to do this. This is kind of the best case scenario in the worst time. So I'm glad we are trying to do something, and I'm really happy that it'll be in person.
Thanks, guys, appreciate you both.
Does this require a vote?
It does, because it's considered a calendar change. And you guys vote on the calendar, which establishes graduation. So I am asking for.
Hey, Jared, I have a quick, I have a question beforehand. And first of all, let me just say, I think it's phenomenal that we're getting a graduation. I'm really, really glad about this. My question is actually probably to Wade. So if our, if our rain date is the 26th, is the next day, and it's 10:00 a.m., it's early in the morning, if we get rain on Saturday, how quickly does that field drain? Because as you all know, that field is garbage. So is it gonna drain quick enough? Should we move that Sunday rain date to, you know, instead of 10:82, so it gives a little time?
So it really depends on how much rain we get and how quickly the sun comes up the next day. That field does get sun all day long. We've actually reseeded that field twice. Obviously, we're off of it for spring sports, so the grass is really thickened up. It's in probably better shape than it's been in a long time. So it's a hard, it's a hard question to answer.
We just lost Wade.
I just feel like this, we get this done, and these kids deserve to have that graduation day. So I'm hoping for good weather. We can lay tops on the field and pull them off. If it's, if it is gonna get a lot of rain on Saturday, we put tops down and then pull them off on Sunday morning. So we'll find a way to make this work. I mean, I think, I think, I'm confident that we can make this happen. We are gonna have town meeting probably out on the football field a month prior. So that's gonna give us a, an idea of how to run this.
Okay, the tarp idea is a great idea. I'm worried about it not drying early enough for a 10:00 a.m. start on Sunday, but if you feel confident about it, that's fine with me.
Okay, so do we have a motion to change graduation to July 25 with a rain date of the 26th?
So move.
Second? All those in favor? Aye, Kathleen Stern, Carolyn?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Dinesh?
Aye.
And Dan? You, all right.
Aye.
Congratulations to the class of 2020. And just a couple of other things that are gonna be generally announced. There is a scholarship for Wednesday that's been taped on behalf of the class of 2020 going on tomorrow night, I believe at 7:00 p.m. with Norton Media. We're open to maybe get.
No, is that next week?
No, this is tomorrow, June 5. Is it tomorrow, June 5?
No, a week.
No, I'm sorry, tomorrow's the 28th. Friday, June 5.
The next week.
A week from 12.
Following week, yes, a week from 12. Thank you, Carolyn. The dates are, apologize for that. So the 5th of, Friday the 5th in the evening, more information to be forwarded to the, actually the entire community, we're gonna send it to everybody. And then the 6th is the rolling parade for the class of 2020. And that will be at 10:00 in the morning. And that'll be rain or shine, I think. But the fact is, that starts at the JCS with cars pre, if you will, decorated and all of that. Norton Police and Fire will be involved, whether it's supporting us as well as our staff. That'll start at the JCS and then roll to the back entrance of the high school, through the front of the high school, by the yellow in my office, out onto the main drag, and then finish at the LGN. So we hope that families will park outside of the road, social distance, of course, and wave to our seniors and celebrate them. Yet, you know, another event to support them, maybe a new tradition even, that's being started by the class of 2020. And then the culminating activity on the 25th of July.
And the Norton media, the June 5th, is that gonna be on the Norton Channel 15?
Yeah, that's on the cable TV for your town, whatever. I don't wanna say the wrong number, because I always screw up the cable numbers for you folks. Well, we'll get that information out to all the families just required this coming week, not just the senior families, so that. Been the only day that I would actually want a suit since March 13th.
So when you send that out to the senior families, can you also just keep us a copy of that as well? As we keep the dates, okay? Thank you.
Will do.
And the parade is open to, that's going to be sent to the entire district, correct?
That is correct, yes, we are.
Because the parents have been asking if it's sort of, if you're expecting just senior parents, but there's a lot of families that would like to come out and just support the seniors, so.
Yeah, the idea behind the day has always been that we're not necessarily publicizing it in the local paper and all of that, but the fact is, our, our families of Norton Public Schools will be notified that it's happening.
Okay.
And I think we have a lot of staff members that would like to be there on June 6 as well, because typically when they do the walkthrough, parade through their schools, and it's a really, really great community event. So I know that I've heard from a lot of staff that they would like to be there as well.
So is this something that people can go, you know, townspeople can go to one of the schools, you know, and be socially distanced and kind of cheer on our seniors?
Yeah, we are not announcing a location or lack of location, because then we have to actually apply rules and regulations. However, typically, our parades are on the main drag, and people park on different sides of the street, and so on and so forth. That's, that's the expectation. There really is no, you know, 50 cars here and 40 cars there, because that will cause some significant issues. But we are gonna, in our announcements, saying that people should social distancing and potentially wearing masks and all of that stuff.
Okay, any further discussion on that? We'll be gone, recommendation and vote on director of pupil personnel services position.
Yeah, so as you know, we, in communicating with you, we went back, we relooked, not only because of the situation that we're in, but also because of trying to establish a transition. As we know, Gene Sullivan will be my colleague as the new executive director at VICO. I'm looking forward to being her boss again, kind of funny. As, since we're on the, we're on VICO, the VICO board, the great board, actually, fantastic school district, so it's gonna be great to have her taking that lead. So tonight, the position of director of PPS is actually required by statute on the recommendation of the superintendent to be voted by the school committee. It's that, that position, the assistant superintendent, the business manager, and the school nurses, which school nurses nobody follows, and actually the school doctor as well. It's still written in the law that way. So Vinnie, as you all know, has not only been in town, his children have been part of the school system. And his son actually graduated from Norton High School as well. He's been with us as the director of social, emotional, and counseling at the high school, but also supporting us with SCL district-wide. And so we're consolidating some positions and then re-author, regrouping with a coordinator, special ed, under, under his office and responsibility day to day, so that we can take counseling, nursing, SCL, and special education, if you will, and bring them together. He still is going to be involved with the high school on a regular basis, all the schools, more so than anything else. And Vinnie will be taking on that role pending your approval tonight. I am recommending the hiring of Mr. Zerci as the new director of pupil personnel services for Norton Public Schools.
Okay, is there any discussion on that?
Hey, I think you should ask him like at least 15 to 20 questions.
This is, this is a formal interview now, Vinnie, so if you have anything to add, now's your time, otherwise we'll be moving on to the next candidate.
I'm afraid of what Dan's gonna say, so I'm just gonna leave him alone. King, personally, I've personally, I've known Vinnie for a long time. Personally, he's an okay guy. Professionally, he's, he's one of the best. I've worked with him a couple of times in a couple of different things. So I think he's been an asset to the district since we cut him. Again, personally, he's just okay, professionally, he's one of the best. So I think he's always had my full support. He's, I think he's got good ideas and hopefully. He can make some more.
Dan, we're losing you.
He can't really say nice things about me, I knew it.
I also heard that if we don't do something with him, Brockton's gonna come and steal him back, so.
Well, it was one of those things where, you know, Vinnie and I really hadn't discussed this. And then, to be quite honest, because of Gene's work with Vinnie and Vinnie with Gene around some of the key issues around counseling and SCL, it became almost a no-brainer in terms of the transition, especially, not only because of a pandemic, but because of being able to consolidate some things, saving some money for the district in a time where it's important to do that, and really bringing some positions together. The coordinator position is needed, but at the same time, all around, it's a savings. And it continues us to move forward. This is a situation where, when you look at trying to do everything that we've been doing, Gene's been with us for quite a while, in terms of special education, it's a constant, constant change. I mean, every day, there isn't a day. And so you gotta have, you gotta have that sense of personality like Gene does and Vinnie does of, hey, you just gotta accept change, it is what it is. There's good days and bad days when it comes to these topics. And I think last, it's, it's a little bit of a feeling of, you know, we know Vinnie versus, oh my goodness, here's a brand new person, we have no idea who they are and what they're, you know, what they're like even as a personality. So given people that don't really know Vinnie, they know of him in the district and how he works with his colleagues, so I think it makes it easy.
So I'm assuming this needs a vote as well?
It does, it needs a motion and a vote.
So we have a motion for the recommendation to vote Vinnie Cersei to the director of pupil personnel services.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, Kathleen Stern, Carolyn?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Dinesh?
Aye.
And Dan?
Thank you all, and congratulations, Vinnie.
Thank you, everyone. I feel like Jared Stidham though, I'm replacing Tom Brady, so we'll see.
He's gonna be awesome. Well.
He's gonna be awesome.
Well, one of the guys on, one of the guys on Tom Brady today, that he's not even gonna start, they're gonna start with the old timer instead for the first game of the season. Well, thank you to you, Vinnie.
Sorry.
Dinesh, you're right, he's gonna be awesome.
All right, moving on, discussion and vote on amendment to the agreement with the Norton Teachers Association and the Norton School Committee.
Yeah, so you have, the first one that you have is regarding the paraprofessionals, where we reworded responsibilities based on the original MOU. So this is just a clarification of what we're now doing with our paraprofessionals as of the original amendment. It clarifies expectations, and to be quite honest, much of this came from our paraprofessionals that were looking to make sure that they could support the classroom in a, in a way that they felt, quote, you know, they wanted to be utilized. So kudos to them, Shannon, for, as the president of the NTA and my office and Gene's office for kind of working together along with Jen to kind of tweak some language and get some of these responsibilities. So I'm asking that you, their executive board is ordered in favor, this is what I'm asking.
Any discussion? Okay, can we get a motion to vote on the amendment?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye, Kathleen Stern, Carolyn?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Dinesh?
Aye.
And Dan?
Aye.
Okay, so the last thing, oh, well, the last thing on the, I'm sorry, not the last thing. Discussion and vote on the amendment of the memorandum agreement between the Norton Teachers Association and School Committee regarding spring coaches' stipends.
As you know, we came up with a formula to support how to get to a number. We utilized the number, that is, the season was in estimated 10 weeks. I met with the athletic director, we went over what folks had been doing for the prior two weeks before we completely shut down. And so we have a recommendation also agreed to by their, the NTA board, head coaches for spring sports receiving 10% of their stipend and assistant coaches receiving 5% of their stipends due to the school closure by C-19 on March 16th. And that's a recommendation as well.
Any discussion? Okay, motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye, Kathleen, Carolyn?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Dinesh?
Aye.
And Dan?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on, the budget.
Everybody's new hot topic, the budget. As you know, we're going to be in front of the FinCom on Monday, so your, your meeting has also been posted, so that way you can speak freely and even vote on issues if it comes up. So what we've done is, so that you know, we're currently working on taking your original approved budget and taking the new 2.5%, that number's still fixed as of, as of this week, of an increase to the budget of $248,941, which is 2.5%. And then from there, we are, as you know, are negotiating with the Norton Teachers Association, both the teachers and the paras. So those negotiations continue, they have not concluded. That's not a bad thing, that's a good thing, both sides are continuing to talk. And I expect some recommendations from the NTA next week, when I meet with them on behalf of Carolyn and Dinesh. All I'm doing is literally receiving information and then moving into the two of them, and then potentially something that we could do before the end of the school year. The FY '21 budget, right now, at 2.5% increase for both the town side and the school sides, is a reasonable number to utilize. Assuming no cuts in Chapter 78 from the state, we are not gonna have any of that until well into July, and I'm now already starting to hear about August. So there could be some further changes to these numbers as we move forward. It's also important to recognize that we don't know what the impact of September school restart reopening is going to look like. As of yesterday, we spent a, Jen and I were on a call that was, I guess I'm gonna use the word amazing, since I have to keep it positive. It was really interesting to see what we are potentially being asked to do. And for the sake of none of it being factual yet, I'm not gonna even try to stop the rumors around what we need to do and don't know, because none of it is written in stone. What is in stone is that there's a working committee. We actually have a principal in our district who's part of that working committee. And it's being led by Ed Davis, the former commissioner of the Boston Police Department, who also now has a consulting firm and is utilizing some major players, former administration from the feds, local hospital, CEOs, superintendents, mental health. hospital, CEOs, superintendents, mental health, you know, nurses, you name it, there's every organization you could think being supportive in that. But I, I also will tell you that there seems to be some significant overkill on some of the discussions. I'll leave it at that. And as some of you have read with the CDC recommendations, I, I don't even know how we start opening school with CDC recommendations as they're currently printed. And if anything, they're unrealistic into what to do with children. That said, it's gonna be very much recommendations that come from that organization, that organizational professionals, those people, that hearing committee, if you will. And then I think a lot of that is gonna come through the Mass Department of Public Health, which then means we'll, what it really looks like in Norton. So I think there'll be some top-down decisions that we have to follow. And then there'll be some interpreting decisions that I think we'll be allowed to do. And I think many of them are gonna require that we have conversations and potentially even votes on the board. The other part that's really important is that all of these have a cost. You know, if you're looking at, you know, one student per seat on the bus every other seat, that's 12 kids. I don't even know how many, you know, what, what, what Matt and I are looking at, somewhere between 25 and 75,000 for an added tier. Are we gonna be staggered open? What does that mean? You know, is it AM, PM? Is it every other day? Is it every other week? You know, how about
But what does that, what does that mean for busing for the, the mandatory busing?
Well, that's exactly it. That's the question that we, we have is that we can't even do mandatory busing, never mind pay and ride. So these are a lot of questions that still need to be addressed. One of the biggest concerns that I have is that unless there's some federal funding that comes to bail this out, then it's gonna be on the state. And I don't know where they're gonna get the actual money to do that. I will tell you that we are currently working with the town on the COVID-19 federal funding that's come in, 1.75 million to the town of Norton. And we've put together all of the expenses that are part of our response to that, including purchase of new technology and depending, you know, for the one-to-one and all of that. And so that will hopefully help us not only in the, in a working budget, but will help us in planning for the future. The other part of it that's really important with the FY21 budget is that it's gonna require more bodies, not less bodies. So it's gonna require the, the reauthorization, if you will, of titles of people. I was jokingly telling the administrators today in our meeting that, you know, we're all gonna have different responsibilities depending on what's happening. Because we could be running all kinds of different programming and situations, you know, in, in some parts of the nation, they're really looking at specialized programs being the first to come back to school versus the older students. Or they're looking at pre-K to five and six to 12 stay home for online learning, not remote learning. So as you know, we have three working committees that are gonna be finalized next week that we're looking to kind of put this, these ideas to work and together. Those committees will probably work. Some of them must, might expand if the state comes down with some, some top-down decisions. Some of them may be working a lot harder than we, than we think and well into the summer. If, this is probably gonna be one of the worst summers to be an administrator in the history of the Commonwealth because we, we just don't know what we are in terms of, of what the final decisions are. Jean Sullivan has been working on the summer programming that we're required. Right now, that is fully remote. But we've also been told that, you know, sometime in July, it could change to face-to-face. So who knows what that'll look like. We're all trying, we're also trying to catch up with student services and student testing and all of that. Again, those are funding sources. Your graduation just got moved to a new fiscal year. That's a funding need. So now you're gonna potentially have two graduations in the same fiscal year. You know, so you can't, you can't just carry over those funds. So things like that are, are really in play in this budget. However, if the 2.5 holds, and if we don't get a lot of surprises, which as you know, some years we do and some years we don't, then we would have limited layoffs for the June 15th announcement. So that would be great. We will prioritize class sizes as a way to make determinations. That's really gonna be how we look at this. I don't think, I mean, counselors is, is a right approach as we're trying to come back with students from a traumatic, in many cases, situation. So our goal is to look at the areas where the class sizes can be somewhat absorbed and make those decisions. Of course, that has a pecking order, if you will, in terms of, I hate to use that frame, but seniority licensure. So Jen and I are currently working on that. And then I plan to notify through these direct supervisor principal, the people that have been impacted, and then they get a letter from me as well. And then we'll make the announcement of how many folks that actually made. As you know, it's really important to me that the staff gets more information just prior to, well, you folks usually get it from me, but I don't make public announcements until the, the next formal meeting. So I'm looking to release information the week of the 8th of June. And then that would mean that, that I would have some of that information to you just before that.
So when they talk about, you know, restarting in the fall, are they talking about like an all or nothing approach? Because, you know, when you look at some of the numbers, like the western part of the state is relatively unaffected, but like, you know, the big cities are getting, you know, hammered. So is it gonna be like a case-by-case basis? Or are they just saying, here's the recommendations, you figure it out?
Yeah. So, so far, we have been, basically have been given very kind of general information and then created our own around that general information, had to have MOUs or MLAs with the unions and all of that stuff. I don't know if that's gonna be their approach. You know, the recent article just said that one in five teachers is not willing to return to work because of concerns around health and, and safety because there is no, how do you call it, vaccine. I can tell you, I have seven emails in the last three days that all talk about returning, not returning, and it has to be this way or else I'm not coming. So I'm planning on providing potential alternatives to those families because I don't wanna lose or unenroll students because of some concerns that families may have. We also have families who don't want their students, their child wearing a mask. Well, as a public institution, if I'm required to have you do that, I don't know how I get around that except for maybe offering some online stuff. So I don't know, Dan, exactly what it's gonna look like. What I will tell you is, whatever we do, whatever we do in Norton, we're gonna do in the best interest of Norton within the rules, number one. And number two, we will make plenty of enemies because there is no clear-cut way. I will tell you that I think the level of patience that our students had and the amount of, I won't say pushback, but the amount of maybe patience I had on making a graduation requirement, in my opinion, may pay off. Because we didn't say we're just gonna do this, this, and it out of the way. We just kept being patient and waiting and waiting and seeing that this would get better. And hopefully, nothing changes and it continues to get better and the weather's a good and, and the decision that the students and the administration in my office made and you supported was the right one. That's gonna be my same approach to this. We're gonna prepare and be ready to go in one direction or another or multiple directions. And I'm concerned about what that means around things like, we're doing budget cuts and yet you potentially are gonna run up a six-figure bill on transportation because of the amount of kids that you, you can put on a bus. Just doesn't seem realistic.
Joe, I had asked you the other day, other towns are doing things a little bit differently and not following sort of the state requirements, for example, graduation dates. So is it town by town? So is it the board of health within certain towns that are kind of overriding the state recommendations? Or just for clarification, so everybody kind of is aware? Because I think what we're gonna find is that there's going to be all these comparisons. This is happening in this town and why isn't it happening here and?
Right. So remember that the graduation requirements came out last week. Prior to that, a number of districts statewide had already made a decision. So what happened was, they basically had the commissioner of education on behalf of those districts with their local board of health say, well, the plan looks good and safe, go ahead with it. But we're not recommending going forward. So the sandwich situation was decided weeks ago. My hometown is so, they'll go with what they're doing weeks ago, decided. And this was the problem. And Jen knows this better than anyone else. I've been asking for a clearance on graduation for at least a month because I wanted to notify our families and I just kept holding and holding and being told it's coming, it's coming. It came out last week. But that's the reason, and that is the only reason. Those communities that had made announcements, instead of eating crow, everybody has basically said, we're gonna check and double-check and triple-check that what you're doing meets a requirement and we're gonna allow for it to happen. In our case, we continue to stay patient. And I think, I know our students want closure. I know our families want closure. I know some people who disagree. But based on the recommendations, I think our patience has hopefully paid off because hopefully by the 19th of July, the next phase of this takes place and we're able to celebrate on the 20th. But that's the reason, Carolyn. Thank you for asking that.
So? Any further?
Yeah, I, I got a couple of thoughts here. I, I think my level of concern over the requirements to reopen is, is fairly high. And, and I approach that from a financial standpoint. And Joe, I have a question. You, you mentioned the transportation and said you were looking at a six-figure hit. And I'm back in the napkin. I'm not, I'm not sure how I see that's less than a multiple seven-figure hit. So what, how are you getting a six-figure hit, or, or seven?
Right. So what that would mean is we would go to it, depending on how we open and the requirement opening, there's, there's an impact. So think about the old days of preschool, of kindergarten, where you had a release of half-day. So that was a tiered system because you had to pick up a group of students in the morning, then drop them off at lunch, then pick up the afternoon kids. So that would be a two-tiered system that you had in place. But what's gonna happen, depending on what the final numbers are, is you're gonna have to add more tiers now. That could completely change because one of the recommendations may be that we can only have 50% of a classroom in class Monday through Friday this week while the other half are at home. So now I'm just running the same group of, I'm just running half of the population of students that take a bus. Again, pay and ride's gonna have to be a discussion we have, but for the required. So then what does that look like? Do I have to add a tier to that? Or am I, which is about, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, is about $25,000 or in that ballpark? Or, and so for every tier I add, if you remember, we, we eliminated a tier a couple of years ago, saving about $50,000 when we put them, yells. So it's the same idea, is that?
All right. So you're, so you're, so you're talking about a reduction in service, too? Because we, we can, we can do everybody, even if we split the day in half?
The first recommendation I would make would be pay and ride is gone. That'd be the first recommendation.
All mandatory. Okay.
It would only be K to six mandatory. Because I don't see, unless we could figure out how many more buses we would need to add and then where does that money come from? You know, is, is it something we go to the town with and prior to doing it, we get FinCom and Board of Selectment and all of that, a special town meeting or a town meeting to approve all of that? I just don't think that that recommendation is gonna be the reality of what we do. And by we, I don't, I don't mean Norton, I mean any of us.
Yeah, I don't see how it can, I don't see how a number of these can be, I, I'm just playing off the CDC recommendations. There, there are almost none. I, I think X wear a mask. There are almost none that were not financial hits. And I think everybody, everybody on this call knows that this, this is not a town that we can take a financial hit right now, quite honestly. Some of them, the, the six-foot distance between, between students is absolute, it's ludicrous. It can't be done. I mean, it's just, assuming a full day of school, at, at minimum, you're, you're now having the size of classrooms. So you have to double the number of teachers. I think we have 17 million in salary or somewhere in there. So you double that, it's a $17 million hit. That coupled with the buses, we've just eaten up the entire budget of the town of Norton. It's, it can't be done.
Right. And added to that, Dinesh, is the, is the issue of our families. I mean, while our students potentially in some way are going to school, our families hopefully are going to work. So I met, I met with Champions yesterday on a, just a general phone call. And the first thing they've already been told through the early childhood department is their ratio of 13 to one will have to be nine to one, no more than 10 students, no more than 10 people. And if in fact, on one day, you have six kids in one in another group and one in another group, you can't cross, cross them into one group of eight, you have to keep them separated. Well, that's a cost that, that, as you know, the parents pay. But even the space becomes an issue. So, you know, we have to be safe for our kids. I, I recognize that. But I also think we have to have some reality that, that the town of Norton's families that have children in, in the school department. And so I'm just talking about that group because it's the group I know. But I would say the town of Norton in general is not a community where our parents can just, you know, not worry about where their children are gonna be. And oh, by the way, who are the daycare providers if in fact kids in third grade are going home at lunch or are staying home every other week? Because the recommendations is not to be with grandparents. It's not to have a big group of them together at the neighbor's house. We just don't, we don't, you know, we're not a W district where we can just have everybody has a nanny, with all due respect.
But Dinesh, to your point, too, on the Massachusetts State call that I was on, we were talking with the Senator, Senator Markey, and he was, we were saying to him that he's going to have to, he's gonna have to give us something. I mean, we can't, we, towns can't afford to, to, to pay for masks and everything else.
Right. And, and the problem's gonna be that we're gonna be last in that line, I think. You know, it's, it's gonna be, there's, there's any state, as it always is, we're, we're way down on the list because we're considered, you know, able to pay district. I mean, it's, and, and I can't tell you, every mandate out of the state, it never comes with, hey, and by the way, here's the money to pay for it. It never does.
Yeah, there's been a lot of discussion, Dinesh, to your comments that, that, the first one is that any of these federal monies that are coming in, that the Commonwealth should release those directly to the general fund of the communities. Because that would allow for both short-term and long-term planning of needs and issues that, that take place. So you could be taking, you know, X number of dollars and saying, well, we're gonna have to do this for this year and this for, and this for next year. I mean, the, the PPE costs to the Norton Public Schools is seven figures. It, it's not gonna cost us $100,000, I can assure you. If they're recommending N95s, which are $5 a pop at, at minimum, if they're recommending that the water in a school has to be 100 degrees or you can't use the water for washing with soap, and you have to have, you know, they're looking at millions of gallons of sanitizer, millions of gallons of sanitizer. For us, it'd probably be not a million, but probably a few hundred thousand. You know, if they're looking at what other countries that have already opened up are doing where every desk has a cold sheep guard or, as CDC called them, a sneeze guard, which I thought was hilarious. I, you know, that's crazy. And oh, by the way, what's happened to those shield guard costs? I mean, Wade would tell you right away, they're probably doubled or tripled the cost already.
Yeah.
So this, you know, how much of this is what we have to do? Because it is a serious health condition. And how much of this is in the best public interest? And that's why I think that at the end of the day, schools are going to be a key to returning us to some type of, quote, the new norm, whatever that is gonna look like.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, there's no vote for that because we don't have the motion, correct?
Correct. Yeah.
So is there any other business?
Yes, a number of issues. And I know there's at least one other. Just wanted, you got a food services update today that all has to do with the federal mandates. Hopefully, you know, there's, there's an opportunity for us to do some other. I did just get an email. I have a, I'm not yet, can't release the name because I haven't been told that I can. I haven't asked them. But I, I am receiving a $5,000 check to go to the food services program. That's a commitment from one of our local companies. And, and once it becomes something that's more public, I'll, I'll inform you of who that is. But that's, that's great because that's an opportunity to have direct services to our families. But I'm, I'm very concerned that our food services is closed for adults, including seniors, going forward, considering that we're averaging about 250 to 300 adults and seniors on a regular basis. But that's the protocol and, and, you know, we have to follow rules as well. And I think Matt did a fantastic job, and I think you were CC'd on it, of addressing direct questions to the finance committee, which we, he will also take up on Monday night as part of our agenda with FinCom. I would like for you folks to seriously consider, not for necessarily today's meeting, but for the next meeting, I'd like for you to consider the recommendation. I'd like for you to consider, um, the recommendation that the School Committee support the holding of a town meeting on Saturday, June 27th, and that we not go with a 1/12 budget. And the reason for that is because we, we feel comfortable that, in terms of the services and availability of the town, and by town, I mean all of us, not just schools, I'm at the town site, so instead of a 1/12 budget. So I'd like you to just think about that until I, um, you know, potentially talk to Kathleen, that we put her on the agenda. Because there's a lot of flip-flopping, in my opinion, that's taking place. There's a lot of Facebook chatter on this topic, uh, there's a lot of concerns about will people show up to a town meeting, and, you know, except for a contentious situation of a two, a prop two-and-a-half request in the past, or, um, us cutting, uh, food services like we did from a, a employee system to a private system, our budget discussions in terms of the budget on, on the meeting floor have been pretty quiet. Um, you know, there hasn't, I mean, the FinCon such as, has done, has, has accepted the recommendation. You accepted my recommendation, even though we might have not liked it. But the fact of the matter is, there's more discussion on other articles, i.e., you know, land acquisitions and changes in zoning and all that than there is in, in, in setting a budget so that we know what we have. Because the October town meeting becomes the most important town meeting anyways, because you're either balancing, rebalancing the budget there because you don't have the money, or you're adding money because you already have deficits. So, um, I know it's not a popular decision per se, but just think about it if you don't mind, prior to, um, the potential that we discuss it further. Sudo reps, um, you already mentioned, Dinesh, so I won't bypass that, and, uh.
So can I just, can I just interrupt for one second? Talking about the, uh, the food services, I, I was a little surprised because I thought that we had talked about continuing, um, for adults, you know, to help cover food because it was the right thing to do. So I was surprised today to hear that we thought that.
It's the mandate from the feds, they refused to move on the 26th of May, and that's what we've been holding and holding and holding to. And they said they would have a response to us on the 26th. Today's the 28th, and they still have not provided us, and by us, I mean all of us. Um, so that's the reason for that, because that's, it's very clear that they changed their game after the 26th, starting on the 27th, to not include adults.
So that means we're being reimbursed 75% up until May 26th, and after that?
MEMA will pick up, potentially FEMA will pick up the remaining 100%, but I guess it's gonna be, uh, the CARES Act that we can file with the town through whatever that matter, you can explain that better than I can, it's all to fun.
Yeah, so the, um, what it is is that the, the, they didn't extend the date that they will reimburse for, so they're no longer reimbursing any adult meals, so we withhold that 100%. Um, what we can do with what we have up until the 26th is we give 75% reimbursement from the FEMA, and then, uh, from the 25% local share, we're gonna use CARES Act funds to close that gap. So up until the 26th, we're 100% funded, um, through federally funds, but now we don't get that 75% reimbursement on any meals served after the 26th.
So what do we have one day then? Because you stopped, you stopped today, adults.
We started notifying earlier, in terms of, earlier in the week.
It's, well, we, we notified on Tuesday that we were gonna have to stop, but, uh, people just kind of trickle in, trickle in. So what we did was we actually got some donations of farmer boxes, which are vegetable and fruit-based boxes. So for the folks that showed up, we, we couldn't give them meals, but we gave them the farmer, farmer's boxes. So they, they were able to take some food home with them, uh, to produce salads and fruit cups and stuff like that at home.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, maybe I misunderstood originally. It's just, you know, it's upsetting because I, if that many people are coming for food, you know, still, it just makes me a little bit nervous.
Well, I'm very frustrated as well. I've been, um, daily, I've been calling MEMA, and they keep saying, oh yeah, they're gonna extend it, but we, we can only go, we, we can't go past that date without affirm, yes, we're gonna reimburse you for that money, because we'll own 100% of the cost.
So that means it's time for the town to step up?
Yeah, well, so the question will be, um, there's a need, right, and right now there's a stop. So there's two parts. Number one, will, will the feds change their mind on this? You know, the School Committee can decide that, you know what, you're willing to take the chance on continuing to feed people. You could do that if you want, but you're, at that point, we know that there is no 75 slash 25, you're owning 100% of it. And the question here has been that we've been put off to the answer to this question. We have been asking this question daily for almost a month in terms of when will this be expanded? And we get verbal, like, it's gonna happen, it might happen, we're not sure it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen. And that's the reason why, um, you know, we started to make the communication about what, what should take place next. Now, um, I, I will tell you that I, I don't know, I, I, I hear that the, the food pantry is opening up, or has already opened up to four days a month, I don't know how that's reasonable. Um, I do know that there was a $10,000 donation made from a third party from Attleboro, I believe. I can't remember the exact, so I apologize if somebody's on the line, uh, information, and Matt, you may want to answer this, but there was an email that went around saying that there was going to be more food brought into the town through this third party. And I believe that's gonna go through parts of the senior center and then the, uh, food pantry. I don't know if that answers your question, Sherry. And then, um, the, um, the other issue I had was the school reopening. We are reopening our buildings, uh, to employees only, specifically principals and administrative assistants, starting on the first, as well as central office, from eight to one. Uh, it's not open to the public, and our staff has also been told that they can come to their classrooms or their offices to do some of their end-of-year, um, situations. We're not asking them to clean, accept any item that they take with them, they should clean it before it leaves. Um, they have to have social distancing, this is not a social hour, they have to utilize masks. Um, and they should be able to, and they're gonna also be supporting us with some of the cleanup of desks and all that stuff in the early grades. And then we will be unifying, uh, sending out a unified effort, if you will, on student pickup of materials from their lockers and closets, uh, and desks and all of that stuff as well, the week of the eighth.
What are you doing, Joe, if, um, an eighth grader or a third grader, or a fifth grader, or an eighth grader have library books that they have to return?
Yeah, we, we, we're gonna ask them to return them, bring them back, uh, and we'll, we'll have, uh, for example, at eighth grader or the middle school, we're gonna have probably the cafeteria available to drop off your textbooks, your library books and all of that, um, and then allow them to go to their lockers. And we'll have counters, kind of like, uh, the supermarkets have done, keeping the numbers low, making sure kids aren't, you know, spending time, just socializing, it's, it's very much a business in and out. The K to three students, we are not allowing into the building, their items are gonna be bagged, um, and names put on the bags, and then as you come up, we'll, um, have you say the name, we'll go grab the stuff out of the, probably out of the gymnasium or cafeteria at the two schools. Um, and the reason for that is just more, we really can't have kindergarten and parents coming into the building. It's just too many bodies and too many people.
Carolyn, I, I forget what we said, are they keeping their stuff over the, the Chromebooks over the summer, or are they passing them in?
So our sixth, seventh, ninth, 10th, and 11th graders will all be keeping their devices because they'll be in the same school, um, next year. Whereas our youngest, um, primary students who borrow devices, we're gonna take those back, um, in our K1 and 2 grades. Third graders will be moving up to the hay, so we're gonna collect those devices so that we can try to keep those up, you know, for the, for the rising third graders. So elementary, we're working with the, um, principals to develop a schedule for return with, um, the materials return, or the pickup, I should say, for the, for the elementary.
We're trying to do, um, to Karen's point, is we're trying to have a pickup of something or a drop-off of something, all at the same time as much as possible, to just keep the flow of, not asking parents to come back and forth two or three times to the same school. We're already gonna probably have parents who have to go to multiple schools on different days. Um, so we're just trying to make up, you know, if you go into the JCS for X, then you get, you get A, B, and C at the same time, as, as well as X. Just try to be flexible for families.
Anything else to add?
Um, none of mine, no.
Can I actually just ask a question? Can I go back to food services, um, and just sort of back on what Sherry was asking about? So the food program currently will only be through June, even for our Norton students, is that correct?
Uh, so the program that we're running under right now is, uh, called the FEMA Summer Option. Um, and what it is, is this is the, this is a program they run when you're not in school. So we do have the ability to possibly run it through the summertime. Um, the question is, will we have the volumes necessary to make it, um, worthwhile to do it? Because we get reimbursement for students, but if we're only serving 10, it costs us a lot of money to, to run this program with very little coming in. Mike Macaro is looking at something right now, we're looking at a couple of options. Um, we may have a, um, a proposal coming forward, uh, to do this through the summertime, um, and having some, um, some help that helps to offset some of the costs. So we may come forward with something that, that has us, or we're just not quite sure right now.
Because I think I'm, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I, I think I'm sort of in the same place as Sherry, I'm just really concerned about, um, our community members, like, you know, if we have such a large number of adults who are in need of support, sort of, um, I just am concerned that we just sort of needed to shut it off. So I wonder, Matt, if there would be a way, like, um, I know that there was that date, sort of, would, you know, when would our food services kind of go until, and how would we extend it, and would we extend it and all of that? If there would be a way to just sort of somehow calculate a number, um, that might kind of represent, if we don't get any reimbursement from whomever, um, if we, as a school department, made the choice to continue to feed , uh, people who are, who, who need it. Um, just kind of thinking, I mean, I, I can imagine what the number would be, and I know it would be very high, but, um, it, it does concern me, and I think I am sort of in agreement with Sherry that, um, turning people away just doesn't feel very good, especially in the midst of what we're all dealing with right now.
So I think that's.
Go ahead, Matt. Uh, so, yeah, we worked, um, we started well over a week ago, um, talking to every person who drives up. So Mike Macaro touches base with everyone as they pull in, or Margot or Amy. We've been talking about the fact that the, the date was coming up, so we, we were, they were aware of it. We, we didn't surprise people and just say, it's, it's cut off and you're gone. Um, we, we communicated with them, we, we said, see, again, it's not our fault, we, we just can't, we can't perform like that. In order for us to continue, we have $2,000 a day that we serve, um, to do the, the residents. So we'd be looking for the, for a two-month, you know, it'd be, uh, for another month, you're looking at about 60 grand.
So one of the things that's really, um, interesting, um, as you know, from the questions, and I'm not saying this disrespectfully, but there was a concerted effort by March 16th to stop feeding people. Because what we were hearing, what we were being told, um, from various sources was there was a concern, people were having to go out of town to get food. And so we stepped up and said that we have the mechanism to do this. We know that FEMA is gonna reimburse. There was a great discussion about adults, we clearly hear about that as often as we could. We, I don't think we could underline the word, you know, adults are a part of this more often on the forums, that we were being provided other memos as, as Matt released everybody. And as you know, on 6/1, this coming Monday, we're dealing with, you know, 6, 8, 10 questions that really start with a scrutinizing of who made the decision, who's paying for it, how do we know? And the School Department, all we did is say, we have the mechanism, there is a potential 75/25 split. We now know that the CARES Act, 1.75 million to the town, can cover the 25%, which roughly is going to be 25 to 29,000 dollars if we go to June 30th, I believe, and that would include adults. That's right. I, I don't think that the CARES Act, um, says anything about adults or anything else, I think it's just food, but I'll defer to Matt on that, maybe it does. We know that FEMA says that you can't feed adults after the 26th of May. I don't know about the CARES Act. Um, I'll defer Matt if you know that, if you don't, that's fine, we can get that answered.
The CARES Act doesn't directly state that we can use it for food, other than, uh, it's really about food pantries. Um, my conversation with MEMA, I asked very directly the question, I said, can I utilize these CARES Act funds to close this gap? Uh, to pay the 25% local share? Well, it, it doesn't say you can't. Um, and then they said they were getting more guidance on that. So I, I'm running with the fact that we can do it. Um, if we can't, um, you know, with money is, is liquid, we'll find a way to, to move some expenses onto the CARES Act and free up funds within our budget to turn back to the town at the end of the year. So, well, we can make it work, it's, it's not, it's, it's not something that won't work.
And Matt, if you correct me, and I'm sorry if I'm putting you on the spot if you don't have it in front of you, but I think you probably are off the top of your head. I believe the projection that you shared with the School Committee via an email, for feeding people until June 30th, I think it was, was somewhere around, 25% was somewhere around 25 to 30,000 dollars, if I remember correctly.
Yes, that's, we're looking at 30 grand right now. We did have some changes in May that we haven't seen what the costing impact is gonna be. Uh, we had, obviously, there are union shop, uh, chart wells, so they had, they negotiated some higher wages. At the same time, we have a ton of donations that came in for food and grant programs for food, so we just don't know what the, the actual cost is gonna be for May. But yeah, right about, right now, we're looking at, saying it's 30, it would be about 30 grand of, uh, local share.
Right, so then the other issue is, and I might as well say it, Dinesh. Go ahead, Carolyn.
As you said, FEMA said that, you know, they were only going to allow kind of food until May 26th to the adults. So, um, do they just not need food after that? Like, what, what was their solution after May 26th? Just stop feeding people, they're not going to need any support, or? It, it feels really kind of very strange that they would sort of make a statement like that, that we'll feed you until May 26th, and then after that, you're on your own. Um, I think, it just, so I'm not, I, I, I'm not really sure what the option is. I'm sure that, Matt, you know, you have really kind of kept us up to date, and I really appreciate all your hard work on this because I know that it's been, um, quite a chore trying to figure all of this out. But, um, I think we just need to continue to advocate or continue to make those phone calls or ask those questions because, um, just because a date is set doesn't mean that people aren't hungry anymore. So it just doesn't really feel good in the midst of a pandemic that, um, somebody can sort of make a blanket statement on May 26th, we're gonna stop feeding you, so.
Yeah, I saw.
I think, Carolyn, that's why we, you know, have asked for a joint meeting with the Board of Selectment ourselves and the Finance Committee. You know, unfortunately, we didn't hear back from, I mean, I myself emailed our town manager, and I never heard back. Um, so we just continue to move forward with a, a meeting for the Finance Committee this Monday. But, you know, this is not just a school, you know, children in our town issue. This, this is people that really need help. And I, I agree, I, I don't, I don't feel good about this at all. Um, you know, Matt, I know you have worked incredibly hard with all of us, and it's certainly appreciated, so please don't take what I'm saying against anything you've done. I'm just extremely frustrated that we are just saying, sorry, you know.
Yeah, we're very frustrated too. It's, it's daily phone calls to MEMA, I'm still, I'm still making them every day, and just saying, you know, what do we need to do, who can we talk to? But, you know, part of the problem is, it took me a month to get an actual person at MEMA that actually knew what they were talking about. I mean, I, I went through 20 different people before I finally got somebody, and I, you know, I kept her number and, and, and her email, and I've been contacting her, and she seems to have some knowledge, but it's not, you know, I mean, I can't keep being told every day, oh, yeah, yeah, we're gonna get the extension, and it just doesn't come along. It's hard to operate like this.
So a, a couple of things, um, to, to Sherry, to you, to you and to Carolyn. So as, as you guys know, I, I feel the same way, this is not about, you know, trying to turn people away. So my resolution to this, um, has always been that I, I do believe that people think that there are people taking advantage of this and we're just giving out free food. Okay, I think I've addressed that issue a number of times by saying, well, you know, I'll see you, you know where. One resolution for us to consider is to, uh, through you, um, myself and the chair, if, with your support, communicate with, uh, directly with, um, the, uh, chair or the entire Board of Selectment and say, so the Dr. Jade has come, uh, will you be supportive of the following? And the following would be that we will continue to feed until the 30th, recognizing that there's a potential, at, at best around $30,000 bill, um, that could be coming forward, of which there's a differentiation between the 25% that is, that could be paid for, or we might have to. or we might have to take some of the turnback money from the school department at the end of the year, because we are going to have some turnback money from our savings, turn it back and go to the general fund. And there could be an understanding that um we're taking care of the citizens as much as we can until, you know, our services are no longer available, because we don't have the the potential to to do it anymore because of disturbance delivery has to start with the students. That's how it starts, and then it can include adults. We could do it that way and just say, if we get, ask them to get a yes or a no. Um, my concern is that the number one issue here has always been a real question on why are they doing this? And that needs to be addressed by the Board of Selectmen and the FinCon, in my opinion, uh sooner than later. Um, so that they, as Dinesh said, and I'm sorry, Dinesh, I'm saying your name. I shouldn't have, said, well, and clearly uh they don't want to do it, so that's, here's the big sign that says, we want to do it, but other people don't want it.
I know. My name's Joe. I I agree with with what you're saying right now, actually. I think, I think the communication is going to be important on this. And um I I I don't think it's a, it's a bad thing to continue to to um to support the program. Um, but I think we need to be really clear um with with the town management side, because it it was abundantly clear to me that there were those on the town management side that were not happy that we were feeding the people who were most in need. Um, for for whatever reason, I don't know why. It's it's not relevant, quite honestly, to this conversation. But um so I I I think we have to somewhat get some some sign off on this. It's.
Go ahead.
I don't see why they wouldn't. Um, but but, you know, as you said, we've been operating now for a while with this cloud over us that somehow we're we're doing something evil or nefarious, and I'm not sure where that comes from. Um, and and it's not everybody about, you know, please don't write and call. But it's it's certainly, there's there's an element on the town management side that is is for some reason unhappy with this program, and I just don't simply get it. So, you know, the 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 theory that there are people sneaking in to get free food, I I doubt the food is that great. I mean, no offense to Chartwells or anything like that, but, you know, this is, it's it's not something that somebody, a reasonable person's going to do. So I I just don't see that being a real issue. I I think this goes, I don't know, this goes deeper than 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 starting about somebody, you know, gaming the system.
Well, as somebody who, on every Tuesday that I've been in, I, every Tuesday that I've been in, I purposely gone to food services. Wade's been there, Matt's been there. They've seen me there. And I have just stood outside and just kind of watched. I get a lot of waves because it's families who know me. I can't tell you how many senior citizens we're we're feeding. It is significant. It's significant. Unless, with all due respect to the senior citizens that are picking up food, uh they're, you know, 40, but they're really 65. I mean, that's not happening. It's older folks, and they're there with their spouse, they're elderly, and they're coming up, and they're choosing a breakfast and a lunch, and they're taking them. And it's probably the only time they leave the house for the day. It is seniors. I've been there. I've seen it. Did I ask if they were a senior? No, I didn't. But the fact is, if you just sit there and you watch it, it's clear. I mean, we've gotten to the point where we've had to change our process of doing it so that people didn't feel like they were, you know, they were disrespected because we were putting things off to here and to there. It's like, you know what? You need your privacy. Pick up your food and and and, you know, your ham sandwich, your your taco salad. I mean, this is not filet mignon, folks. This is, this is just keeping people with some food in their system. It doesn't even count for the 2,000 on average calories or whatever the heck the number is nowadays, because I definitely eat more than that, so.
The reality, the reality is, we were, we were feeding the people who were most in need with 25 cents on the dollar. It was a good program. It was the right thing to do. It's not to be. End of story.
We, I think maybe we bring this up Monday night with the FinCon. I mean, they were, they were the ones that wanted to sit down with us, wanted to ask questions and and hear the accurate information. So, you know, Joe, if you want to work with our town manager, uh maybe he'll respond to you um about some of the things that we're dealing with and and that who these people are that are coming for food. That this is, I I'm just not okay with, oh, sorry, that's just, that's not who we are. It just isn't. So, good luck.
And I think that, and I think there's a, like I said earlier, there there's a $5,000 donation that's coming in. Uh, you know, uh Sherry as much as anyone on the board, but we have donations coming in, other checks that have come in. We have the ask for checks to offset whatever that final potential $30,000 bill could be based on the projections. It's 25 cents, as Dinesh clearly always says, it's 25 cents on the dollar to take care of people in need. Uh, yeah, we can have all kinds of debate of those taking advantage. We could take advantage. We could say that it's people coming from another town. I don't think they're coming from the city of Ton or Rattleboro, because I know that there are multiple sources in those two communities. Multiple sources. There isn't a, just a food pantry open four days a month. It's, you know, three days a week. Um, so I will write something up um and share it with Kathleen and then send it to the Chair, Mike Eunice, and um CC the rest of the committee. I hope you're able to expect something from me over the weekend, okay?
Okay, and I I I agree. I I mean, I think this is not the time to start not feeding people, that's for sure. But obviously, we need the town support for that, so it would be nice to have it. Um, anything else?
Yeah, Kathleen, I don't see enough.
Okay.
Sorry. Joe, you spoke some more ahead. Do you have more?
No, I'm all set. That was Matt. I don't know if he had something to close that out.
Sorry, Matt.
I do have, I have one item. Um, you guys had asked us to go back and look at the clubs and activities. Uh, we went back and looked through them, and we had only one uh club that uh had not completed the minimum criteria. For completion, that was the Middle School Spring Intermurals. However, High School Drama and Middle School Drama, although they did get the minimum number of meetings in, they did not get their productions done. So we now vote uh to refund the money for the High School Drama, the Middle School Drama, and the Middle School Spring Intermurals.
So that's a refund to families. Uh, that's not uh, that's not answering the issue of this, if this type in percentages or whatever, like we did with sports. You're going to be able to come to you with that later.
So it's not a vote for tonight?
Uh, yeah, we're asking because it's last minute so that we can start the process. And we just, we didn't think about it until literally yesterday that we we should put this on the agenda. So we're putting it under other businesses as clubs activities refund, as noted by Matt.
Okay, so do we have a, is there any discussion on this? Do we have a motion for the refund?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, Kathleen, Carolyn?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Dinesh?
Aye.
And Dan? You're muted, Dan.
Aye. Thank you.
And Dinesh, you had something?
Okay, yeah, um, sorry, this this might be, well, it shouldn't be too long, I guess. Um, so speaking to Laura Parker recently, who um you may or may not know is the, I can see, I believe she's the chairwoman of the uh the committee that is overseeing our charter considerations and and potentially redoing the town government, et cetera, et cetera. Um, she brought someone up to me and asked if uh if, what I thought about it, and, you know, if I could weigh in. And I I thought maybe the best thing would be to kind of bring it to you guys, not necessarily for a vote, but just kind of to give you my thoughts on, and to get some of your thoughts as well. So certain towns um in in the state of Mass have uh different, different parts of their their charters, which allow for citizens to enact certain actions by uh by government bodies. So there are, there are three that we're, we're talking about here, three that we're, that she's looking at. Um, and all three are are potentially, I think, options either separately or as as a group and in any combination. So when I say that I mean, the first, the second, the third could all be part of this. It could be the first, not the second and third. But there are multiple, multiple iterations of this. So um and I'm, and I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to discuss this in the, with respect to the school committee. But again, it would be for potentially any, any electable body. So the first, the first thing that we discussed was something called a free petition. And what this does is it asks for a measure to be considered by the school committee. It is not binding. It doesn't make us do anything. It simply um asks us to have a public discussion on it. We we can do something, but we're not, we're not bound to do something. This would be accomplished with, and these numbers are preliminary, not set in stone, again, just numbers that we were discussing. This would be accomplished by a by a petition of 100 voter signatures. So it's not overly onerous, but again, it doesn't necessarily force us to do anything. If um, as an example, they said, hey, we we'd like the school committee to consider um requiring that Joe Vaiata wears red shirts all the time. We say, okay, we'll, we'll consider it. We consider it. We have a public discussion on it. We all vote aye or no. Uh, the second, second possibility is something called a Citizens Participation Initiative. Um, this one has a little more, a little more teeth to it. So it would require 250 petition, uh petition signatures, again, not set in stone. Uh, and within 30 days of approval by the town attorney, that the the initiative was in fact legal, was lawful. We would have multiple options. So we could, one, pass it without change. We could, two, reject it. We could, three, put it to a town vote. Or we could, four, and this one is, it's important in its wording, we could pass a measure in lieu of the initiative. What that means is we could change it. So we would say, hey, you know what? We don't really like Joe in red, but we think blue's his color. We're going to, we're going to make him wear blue shirts instead. Now, this would be considered, I like the thumbs up, Joe. This would be considered a rejection, because it was not the initiative that the citizens proposed. It's important for a reason, and I'm going to get into that. So if in fact we reject it, if we reject it or we we um pass something in lieu of it, in in other words, you know, essentially reject it, then they can actually try and force a town vote on it. So to do that would take 10% of the registered voters in a petition within 45 days. That's 1,257 signatures within 45 days. If they get that number, then it would potentially go to a town vote. At the town vote, 15% of the registered voters would have to show up at the vote and participate for it to count. A little more onerous. That one, that one's kind of a tough, it's a tough uphill climb, to be quite frank. Um, and the last thing is, uh, it's called a referendum. And it basically is something that asks for something that we have passed to be rescinded. So we say, we let Joe in blue, and they say, we don't want to wear blue shirts. We want that to be rescinded. This would require a petition with 7.5% of the registered voter signatures. That's 943. And it's within 21 days of us actually passing that. Uh, that's, that's a high hurdle, quite frankly. It would, it would have to be something that the town was fairly passionate about uh to get that number of people to sign off on that. Um, if, if in fact there is a town vote to rescind it, there has to be 20% participation of the registered voters in order for the vote to count. So that, that's a very high hurdle, quite frankly. Um, and I've talked to Joe about this, and when he and I discussed it, there are some exemptions to what would be allowed in this. Um, I think the next step is probably for Joe to sit down with Laura and and potentially have um either a school committee representative or even maybe um one of our school lawyers sit down with him as well and discuss kind of what, what we would be concerned with. I think Joe had some concerns with it. Um, I I do think this makes some sense, because, you know, there is, there is a sense in the town, I think, that the school, the school committee operates with no oversight. I, there are elections, so that's patently not true, but whether or not it, you know, whether or not the perception is that is it's that we operate without, without, you know, with impunity, if you will. So um I I do think that this, this is a positive thing. I think that it's, again, a pretty high hurdle to get the referendum in place. And quite frankly, if that many people in the town did feel a certain way about something as elected members, I think we actually should be listening to them at that point. We should probably at least sit down and hear them out, quite frankly. So um this is, this is the, the thought process behind this. It's, it's kind of what they're looking at. Uh, I want to open it up for discussion if there's somebody who sees a real huge problem with this. Uh, maybe, Joe, if you want to start it off, and you can tell them, you know, the the specific concerns we have, but.
Yeah, I I mean, some of, some of the um, some of the issues is that, um, for example, on the town side, everything that has to be, the budget has to go through a town meeting, right? Versus town meeting on the school side by state statute is a bottom number vote. Um, and then the school committee can decide how it wants to move monies and so on and so forth. Um, the biggest issues that I see would be around personnel. Um, you know, a vote to eliminate a line item in the budget for a position, for example, could be something that 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 I think would would be significant. Uh, it'd be another way to circumvent a school committee. So, and I'll use myself. I mean, school superintendents can be controversial figures on decisions. So if people don't like, you're just supportive superintendent, then can they go through a petition process to get rid of the superintendent by zeroing out the line item in the budget or things like that? Um, contracts. Um, as you know, earlier today, you received some interesting insight about contracts. And, uh, you know, contracts are negotiated um in a closed session by the two parties, a union or an individual, um with school committee, subcommittee, and in our case, two people that are done in good faith. And you have a petition that would say, well, no, we we're not going to agree to give out 2% raises. Uh, we're going around that. So those are the some, those are some of the the questions. Um, and then the more controversial questions actually could be things like social dynamics of what we have to do in a school. Ie, could you go around um the support of uh, you know, how we, how in non, we decide to do whatever? That doesn't circumvent the state law, but it's the way that we do it. Could then a petition go around and change that? Um, so those are some of the negatives. But in general, I think Dinesh has hit a point that's interesting, and that is that because we have the statute is so clear about what town meeting can do for a school committee and the the vote of the school committee to change line items. Um, some people do think that, you know, we can do whatever the heck we've done with budget. I mean, we face that every time. It's been a two and a half, oh, right, Wade Lazard and I talk about who in town uh is just calls us outright liars, uh, we're hiding and so on and so forth. So there's a petition, there's a potential that this this type of a petition could help to 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 resolve that piece of misinformation that could be out there.
Right, and and I do, I I, I talked to Laura long enough ago, and I don't, I don't recall the conversation exactly. And I I I think that when we spoke, it was, I I I believe that we talked about the the types of citizens initiatives and referendums and participations that would be allowed. Would have to be things that that the school committee could actually vote on. So um, with respect to like positions, et cetera, there are only a very few, and you mentioned them actually earlier tonight. There are only a very few positions that we actually are, by statute, allowed to, you know, or or um empowered to go down, I guess.
Right. So there's only one directly, and that's the superintendent. The other one's under recommendation.
Right, and and I know that we often have votes on things um more as a, as a practice. Um, but quite honestly, and Joe, you and I have this conversation all the time, it's actually not within the scope of our, of our job. So while, while it's a, it's a very um nice thing for you to do, and it's very accommodating, and it gives us a sense of nothing to say, there are a number of things that would be under your say and your say only. So even, even if they were to say, hey, we want you to, to, the school committee to demand that the gym teacher be fired, well, guess what? It doesn't really fall under our purview. So I would assume that the town attorney would say, yeah, that's actually not a legal issue, quite frankly. Um, so, you know, there's, there's definitely some protections here. And uh, and and I think talking to Laura and the rest of that committee and discussing what, what your concerns are, I think that's kind of the next step here. But I think it's a workable document.
And Dinesh, to, to your point, as I said to you when we talked offline, I think the issue here too is, this is not like a creative thing by non-citizens involved in this. This is information that they've received from other parties. So one of the things I would have for that commission or for Laura would be, if you give me some insight on who's doing something like this, so that, because then I could make several of those calls. I think there's one, if I remember correctly, I think there's one in the Arbert Cape. It was very controversial. It was done a few years ago, but since then, it's been, to be quite honest, quiet. It was, I think, very much around an issue. And I don't want to say the name of the community, but I I think, I think I remember.
I can tell you some communities that are doing it, and I can, I can guess, Amherst, Amherst, Barnstable, Franklin, North Rattleboro, Randolph, Waterton, West.
Yeah. Yeah. It was, it was, it was Barnstable, because they were, they were one of the first ones, if I remember correctly.
As soon as you said that, I said, I bet you're talking about Barnstable. Did anybody else have any thoughts on it or? All right, great.
Well, I mean, is it something to think about or something to vote on? Are they asking us for our vote?
It's not on the agenda. I knew it was just simply me kind of getting your thoughts. I think, you know, because, because here's the thing, I I I think ultimately, you know, it's, it's honestly, it's, we can't really vote on letting them or not letting them. It's not up to us, quite honestly. It's, it's their call, whether they include it or not. It was more a question of, what do you think about this? Do you think, you know, it's something that makes sense? Is it going to be overly onerous for you guys? I don't think it is. I I think the hurdles are high enough for the the things that really have some teeth, that we're going to be okay with it. You know, I, again, if if that many people feel that strongly about it, we probably should be listening to what they're saying.
I I like the fact that they are requesting that percentages of the voters be in.
I, I like the fact that they are requesting that percentages of the voters be involved with that. I mean, we don't, we don't have that right now. I mean, literally, a hundred people decided that um we were going to do zoning changes in January, in um, I think it was January, which ended up getting overturned when four hundred people showed up for it.
Right. Okay, so, uh, that's it. I guess, maybe, Joe, you and, you and I and Laura can kind of get together on it. And maybe you guys have time to, to sit down and um, I think you, you can, you can deal with the, the specifics of it, but probably we do, we do want to have um maybe a town presence just to kind of.
Yeah, I think we should start with a, a general conversation, then then go from there about, you know, because I, you know, me, I'm going to try to do some of my homework with some of my colleagues in some of those communities and say, so how's this working for you on the school side? You know, has it, has it been positive? Have you seen, has it helped to clean the air around some of the dynamics of the community in the school department? Or has it caused, you know, has it caused clarity? Uh, because people really don't understand our budget, our budget is around personnel. It's very different from mandates.
Yeah.
The mandates are the big thing.
Yeah. And, and I gotta, I gotta say, just a quick, a quick shout out to, to Laura and that committee. Like, they're, they're doing a great job. I mean, whether they end up with something that, you know, that the town goes through or doesn't go through or whatever, uh, they're, they're doing their homework. They're, they're putting a ton of effort into this. Uh, and what she had to talk about it, she really, she really knew what she was talking about. So um, I, I have high confidence that they're, they're heading in the right direction.
Okay, any further discussion?
I just want to thank the twenty-six people that are in attendance. That's the most people I've ever seen in a school committee meeting. We got to zoom this more often.
It's riveting information, Jeff.
Yeah. I'm sure I'm a bit thrilled with my whole conversation.
Yes.
We ran up to thirty-four at one point.
Okay, well, at some, at some point, we've bored a few of them.
I think that's when Dinesh started.
Probably.
Uh, motion to adjourn, Ms. uh, Ms. Stern.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Do we have a fourth, a fifth, a sixth?
So we have, uh, just for the sake of the minutes, we have, so we have, who made the motion?
I think Dinesh did, and I think Sherry second. That's fine.
Okay, we just want to add that to the record and then.
And then all those in favor? Aye, Kathleen, Carolyn?
Aye.
Don't jump ahead, Dan.
Oh, sorry.
Sherry?
Aye.
Dinesh?
Aye.
Dan?
Yes, aye.
Next thing you know, you'll have a parrot. All right. Good night, everybody. Hey, I have a great night.
See you Monday night. Bye.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
Night.